This special call meeting. Sorry, running a little behind. But at this time, we ask that you all please stand for a moment of silence. And we ask that you remember everyone that was affected by the horrible weather that came through these last past few days. And we will follow that by the Pledge of Allegiance. And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are on item number one, which is review of the agenda. Oh, by item number two, adoption of the agenda. Anyone has any changes, additions, subtractions?
It's a special meeting, I don't think you heard anything.
You are correct. Okay, what do you may like to make?
To make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion by Ms. Constanen.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Talby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item number three, approval minutes for the November 15th, 2021 regular meeting. Any questions, concerns?
Make motion to approve minutes.
Motion by Mr. Talby.
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, we are on student and staff recognition. Down there?
Yes, down there.
Trying to step on anything.
Okay.
Sorry. No, you're fine. I just didn't want to step on it.
Our first recognition is for Mr. Kerry Elliott and Ms. Lindsay Hale. We're gonna have them go ahead and come up. Clark County Public Schools would really like to recognize Ms. Hale and Mr. Elliott from CTPS Technology Department. Their commitment to the STEM Bus Project has led to the development of an outstanding resource. You didn't get to see it, it was out there tonight for the board members to go through. It's one that is having a very positive effect on our P36 students in our district. Mrs. Hale and Mr. Elliott took over this project. They had limited hands-on supplies and no dedicated budget, but they have spent the last two to three months crafting it to find an example of what STEM learning and educational technology can look like as they continually seek out new instructional tools and employ their, and their lessons. Due to Lindsay and Kerry's dedication to improving educational practice and success in our district, our students are excited when the STEM Bus pulls up because they know that they will be learning in a fun, interactive, and project-based manner. So we're really excited for you guys.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay, and next we have our, I know, we've got so many. We have our all-state choir students. I'm gonna go ahead and just give them to you and I'll read while you have them all come up and then we'll do one picture. Is that okay?
Whatever you want to do.
All right, so I'll let you do the names.
Oh, you want Mary to name?
Yeah, you can make the names.
Mary Lawson? Nope, Macy Lawson. Carter Johnston? Destiny Sanders? Caroline Brookshire?
I know they got the memo I checked today.
Bailey Howard?
Bailey's in gymnastics, that's the only one that I heard of. So let's go ahead and just pause for a second.
We got one more.
Oh, yes, that's the.
We practiced this last time. Holly Bennett.
Is Holly here? The band director? I mean, our director? Okay. The above students have been accepted into the Kentucky Music Educators Association Junior High All-State Choir. They were selected through a rigorous audition process and they will perform at the Junior High All-State Triple Choir at the Kentucky Music Educators Conference in February. This is the highest honor a choir student can receive in the state of Kentucky. We are very proud of them and their hard work. Okay, so our next group. They gotta be here because the crowd is really good.
Am I reading?
Yeah, go ahead and get the names.
Angel Fisher. Yay! Okay, so if you want to.
How are you?
Good. Congratulations. Okay. Mahi Patel. Is that right? Wyatt Jackson. Olivia Root. Jose Muse. Ryder Adner. Kaylee Christopher. Tyler Crawford. Landon Harley. And Calvin Schmig.
There's one more student, I must have left his name off. Scotty Mitchell. Oh, that's on me. Scotty Mitchell too, he's here.
Okay. Scotty, we will get you a certificate. So these students, they auditioned and they were accepted. Let's get pictures and then I'll read our recognition. Ready? All right, so these students auditioned and were accepted into the Kentucky Music Educators Association for District Seven Middle School Honor Band, competing against students from Bourbon, Scott, Franklin, Jefferson, and Fayette Counties. They will attend Honor Begin Weekend on January 7th and 8th at the Great Crossing High School where they will learn music and perform a concert with students from around the region. We're really excited for your all's accomplishments. Great job. We're all silent under these masks, right? Okay, thank you guys so much. Okay, and now we have one of my favorites. So we love partnering with Smoke Signal. So Ms. Crosby is in the house and is Ms. Marissa here?
Yes.
All right. Come on, Marissa, let's see, she's up there. So Marissa got to meet with me, I'm gonna let you hold this and then I'll give you your certificate too. Let me hand this to Ms. Richie. Yeah, right. She looked at it. So Marissa designed our, you wanna hold it up? She designed our Christmas card that we sent out to all of our community stakeholders on behalf of myself and the board. Just really excited to work with her. She was able to kind of take a vision that we had and she created this lovely, lovely Christmas card. We had a calendar on the inside and she's also done some work for us that we'll talk about here in a little bit around the efforts that we're trying to make to help our neighbors in Western Kentucky with some graphics. So we just are really proud of you. Thank you. And really this is a testament to the work that Smoke Signal does. So if you haven't followed them or like them on their Facebook page, please make sure you do. Yeah, she can keep that. Okay, but I do have this to read about her. So when Dr. McCollum had the idea, student designing the district-wide Christmas card, Marissa Gilchrist was the outstanding choice for the job as the graphics editor for GRC Smoke Signal Student Media Program. Marissa consistently does exceptional work producing a variety of graphics that cover everything from entertainment to sports. Her attention to detail, she's meticulous, she has a great work ethic, and is a perfect combination to make her a Photoshop expert. Marissa worked with Dr. McCollum to produce a Christmas card that boasts as beautiful and functional as the district calendar is included in the card. It should also be noted that she created the calendar manually, which apparently was a really difficult task, typing it up and lining up everything in the given month. Marissa's fantastic example of how GRC and CTPS students can make them hard by producing real-world projects with excellence. So thank you again, Marissa.
I paid you a bill.
This is one that is really dear to Ms. Richie's heart and I'm excited about this as well. So I'll present and let Ms. Richie.
I will read this because you don't even know this, but this child is also my daughter. This is Aiden Hall and Aiden started Lumosity, did I get it right? Okay. Competition in October of 2021. Thousands of kids from the U.S. and Canada entered into this competition. It is kind of like the EA Sports that is now, since virtual learning has went on, that's becoming a really, really big thing. They narrowed it down to 30. From there, they started making videos of the remaining 30. They started doing team and speed building exercises using Legos because that's who the competition was being sponsored by. From there, it was narrowed down to the top 15 where they continued to compete and make videos. It was then narrowed down to the top eight. Aiden was eliminated and then brought back because of an error. He continued to compete and last week was announced as the first member of the Lumosity Gaming Academy. He will now go on to be mentored by some of the top creators in the video gaming world as well as the YouTube creators and TikTok. This makes him part of the Lumosity Esports Team, which is one of the biggest organizations in the world. Aiden accomplished all of this while participating in our virtual program and maintaining an honor roll status. Excuse me.
I think you need to hold this down, blow it out so we can see your shirt.
Sure. That's technology and that's big for them.
Yeah, congratulations.
Good job, Aiden.
We have the attendance poll and our attendance.
Okay, before you do that, I really, really think we need to do one more.
Okay.
I think that every year, see you've missed this.
Okay.
We've had best dressed and the people at home, you missed it. So the only thing that's right, that this guy acts kind of up front, so everybody has.
We all have you all over. I'm so sorry.
Anybody else got spirit wear on today? I mean, can y'all talk to each other? Come on, we got some spirit wear back here.
Ms. Constanen?
Oh, no.
You don't wear anything? Ms. Constanen, come on. We got some spirit wear, let's have a little fun. Do we have some Christmas mats? Some pair, Ms. Hale, you must stand up for us. Matt, Matt, send it to you.
Oh, yeah. I will never count on you.
There you go. Nice girl. Okay, Miss Hale, Miss Hale, stay up here. So our secondary attendance winner this month is favorite intermediate with 93.7%. It's getting rough in here tonight.
Oh, Frosty took a hit.
Sorry. And then our elementary winner is Shear. Come on up, Mr. Kennedy. Yeah, Ms. Richie, come on over.
Yeah, you better get Josh's.
I know. You're gonna have to come back and get a picture. Right here. Okay, right there.
We're like this. We got our cars. You gotta say my car, it needs it. Everybody's bad.
You should. Okay. And then our overall district winner, she needs no introduction.
She's coming on. She just didn't voice like.
To Rock and Strode Station. Strode, is this three months in a row?
I don't know.
You didn't.
They have 94.5% attendance, so great.
Way to go.
All right, thank you.
Did we get Josh?
Three for four. Josh is keeping tabs. About buttered you. I did a little butter you.
Well, that was happy.
Well, that was fun. Congratulations. Now, Mr. Schmig, he was here. I wonder why he, you said his name too, I wonder why you didn't come up?
I don't know.
Yeah, because he was the one that told us that Holly wasn't here, Miss Bennett.
Oh.
I'll get him to him next week. I mean, this week. That was fun. I'm glad you did that impromptu.
I mean, that's pretty. Josh is. It popped like crazy, did it? Oh, did it? It was.
I'll get her home. We'll get the, was it Big Gang Observatory Junior?
Yeah, I'll just have to put something on the side. He said, are you ready? And I was like, for what?
You're like smiling.
You missed the memo. I missed the memo. And then the next thing I was like. I did not do that. I just wanted.
Okay. We are now on to public comments. Ms. Nina Hager. Oh, can you tell me which one your comment, and I'll just write it on here?
So it's not anything on the agenda. I just have some general questions about the related COVID and the COVID protocol for public schools.
Okay.
Based on a situation that just recently occurred.
The special meeting policy says comment discussion can only be about what's on the agenda.
It's a special, if it was the regular meeting, you could, but it's a special meeting.
Okay, can you at least tell me how I can go about getting a response because nobody's responding to me, other than you?
You're welcome to email me or come to the office.
Yeah, we have.
I have not received any emails from you, but you're welcome to make an appointment through Ms. Nance and come and see me. Thank you.
Sorry. Okay. Superintendent Report, you are up.
Okay, again, I kind of organized these based on the standards of evaluation. So for strategic leadership, we've been working on staffing allocation and reviews with budget discussions. Again, meeting with principals to look at staffing needs and current structures for funding. We also have looked at the, met with the architect and did our preschool schematic design and looked at adjustments needed possibly for the information that we'll be bringing before the board, so we're excited about that. And then on standard two for instructional leadership, we met with our Cardinal Lead PLC and we did that in work sessions again that focused on technology, finance, and food service. Another session focused on transportation, grounds, and human resources. And then we also talked about the relationship between RTI, which is Response Intervention, and social emotional learning. And so I gave you all a packet, if you don't mind, let me hold this up. I gave you a packet that shows you what we did in our full PLC. Yeah, so you just have access to that. There's also a newsletter in there of information that we communicate with our building leaders. And we also looked at the ITIME, which is the impact form that we do when we go into buildings between principals, assistant principals, and district leadership. So Ms. Fithin and Ms. Monfield will be sharing some of that information with you this evening. For cultural leadership, just being in the community, being in schools, different things that I've attended are listed there, from sporting events to mental health events to cheer competitions and the Polar Express over at Shear, it's been a lot of fun. And then general visits to schools. So it was a little bit lighter this month on being engaged in schools. You'll notice under influential leadership, I focused a lot more on trying to meet up with community members and foundations that we're trying to connect with. Under standard five, I'm sorry, for standard four, the human resource leadership, that specifically focused on that human resource and transportation and grounds. Ms., I'm sorry, Mr. Fisher, Mr. Stump, and Dr. Parrish have worked real closely together on information that they presented to our building leaders. We also are looking at the finance department due to our recent resignations, so we're looking at some management techniques there that's gonna help us focus more closely on red book. And then the supervisors of operations that you all recently approved, been meeting with those two gentlemen and working with them to make sure that we have our appropriate structures in place. Under managerial leadership, NTI has not been used typically in the past for inclement weather. So we have developed a plan for NTI and we've shared that out with our building leaders so that if we do have bad weather, instead of it being a snow day, we will end up using an NTI day. And so we are finalizing all of that information this week and it will be going out to the community at the end of the week to make sure that kids are ready and hopefully we won't need it, but if we are gonna come back from January with possible bad weather, we'll be prepared. Under standard six for collaborative leadership, been working very closely with KDE, that's consumed a lot of time, making sure that we're ready to have a strong committee in place for the ATC principal selection. So Ms. Jamison resigned, she took an advisory position at KDE, so we're excited for her, but that leaves us with a need and we want to make sure that we find a leader that has a strong focus on CTE and also has the collaborative leadership style that we need them to have to be successful with our GRC leadership staff. And then we also hosted an elementary principals meeting where we just had good discussion around the types of conversations that they need to have for their teacher and staff observations and evaluations. We also gave feedback, they, they shared feedback with one another. Then we also talked about how we can better support our teachers. Under influential leadership for standard seven, I met with MSU president and we discussed barriers for students. We're also talking about expanding opportunities within our school so that high school students have more opportunities for dual credit classes. Met with Winchester Sun Editor, Mr. Layton, as you all know, you probably got a really nice paper in the mail, little extra something. So that was something that he shared with me so that we could get him into our schools, more sporting events to make sure, I think they're actually gonna partner some with Smoke Signals to get more coverage for athletic events. And their goal is to increase subscribership and our goal is to increase information going to the community about our school district. Been working with KEDC Board of Directors and also KASs and Kasa, and I just listed two of them. So we're doing work around the collective need for public education to increase and of course, we're getting ready to start back into general session, but asking for an increase in SIC dollars to make sure that we can properly fund our schools. We want to also have a push towards being more aligned K through 12 for curriculum and also on principal hiring. We are focusing on recruiting and retaining staff and that's some of the work that Dr. Parrish is actually working on with a focus on scholarships for teachers, raises, and equitable funding towards the retirement system. We want to also maximize in-person learning. We want to be prepared for a long-term strategy against COVID or any other possible illness that would cause havoc like it has over the last 18 to 24 months. There's also a big push for full-day funding for kindergarten. The big ask here is that we get that without taking money from another pot that then has to be funded by the schools in order to get the full day funded kindergarten. One thing that didn't come to the collective ask, but several superintendents, including myself, are still advocating for, and it's full funding for transportation because we don't get reimbursed for the full funding of transportation. So that's another item that we are advocating for. I also got to meet with Clark County Foundation Committee, so that was more of introductions and an overview as the Good Giving Challenge was going on. I met with Judge Earl Neil and we talked about just introductions and the work that he does to support our youth around attendance and truancy. Met with the Clark County Unity Committee and we talked about the partnership for the Martin Luther King Breakfast that's coming up. Also got to attend the Clean Water Check presentation from Governor Boshier and we had one of our students there that did that, so that was really interesting and got to actually have some talk time with him around some of those issues. So that was nice to learn some things about him too that I didn't know. And then again, the Kasa conference, similar work is what I just described to you. And also Kasa attended a finance meeting that was more around the food service programming, inventory, meal pricing. So Ms. Lowry sat in on some of those things with me that I appreciated and we were able to share back with other superintendents that have questions that our food service department and nutrition director was able to answer for them. Things that are upcoming, Kasa superintendent's training is in January. Also, we have our consolidated monitoring visit that we're getting prepared for, so we've got a big training team set up with KDE for that. And then Board of Directors meeting will be January 19th and I'm sure that list will grow just in the next couple of weeks, but that's what I have right now. Do you all have any questions?
The NTI?
Yes, sir.
Isn't there a process to apply for NTI?
Typically, there is. This year, the state gave 10, like last year was unlimited NTI. This year, the state gave 10 NTI, but no more, you know, no more can be given to that and they can be used for COVID relief and/or inclement weather. And so we will be able to use those if, you know, if the roads are bad and we want to shut school down, we can transfer to an NTI day the same way we could have if it was through COVID.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did we not apply last year anyway? I thought we did.
They have to.
Well, you didn't have to because, yeah, and prior to that, we didn't and so therefore we didn't have NTI days.
Well, I knew we didn't before, but I know last, we discussed applying if we were needed.
And then Ms. Constanen had asked me earlier, so with the relief efforts in Western Kentucky, that's something that we have put out. JR OTC has reached out wanting to help and then of course, different organizations. I met with some pastors this morning. But what, some of the information that we're getting back from Western Kentucky now through American Red Cross is they're getting so many donations that they're almost overwhelmed with the donations and they are asking for like gift cards and different things. So we're gonna be reconnecting with them tomorrow and then we will, you know, place that out on social media and through messaging with our schools to make sure that we are meeting the need when the need is needed. And we might become more of a phase two so that instead of taking supplies down on December 20th, which was the initial plan, we might wait until like January 20th and be able to send buses down with supplies. And we will continue to partner with churches and organizations if they need help getting those supplies down there, that we will do that through our co-ops that are helping coordinate those efforts. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I told this to Mr. Talby because you weren't here at the time. I want to give a special thanks to the Craft Nook. They have put on loan all of the decorations for our board office and central office lobby and it was just really nice of them to, to do this for us, so we appreciated them.
Okay. Item number four, update on the STEM Bus.
Hello, I'm Melody Jackson and I had the amazing job of getting to work on the Clark County STEM Bus. And I was just sitting back there, I went out and looked at the bus a few minutes ago and I've been following the Clark County STEM Book Facebook page and seeing the kids that are starting to go onto the bus. And I guess it was about a year ago this time that that STEM Bus was just a series of sketches on my desk. And we had started talking with Greg Holland and the administrators here in Clark County about wanting to get a bus and transform that bus into a mobile learning unit. And we were thrilled. I have to admit that this STEM Bus is our third STEM Bus and before we started our very first one, we had no idea how to even make a STEM Bus. We were basically a group of, we're an architecture firm that typically does buildings and educational buildings, schools and other things. And yes, we have some quirky projects, but we had never had someone come in and ask us, can you get a school bus and turn this into a mobile learning unit? But we liked the challenge. Fayette County was the very first one and then followed Floyd County down in eastern Kentucky and then Clark County became the third. And then Clark County became the third and I can honestly say, not just because I live in Clark County and my children have gone to Clark County Public Schools, but this one is the best. It's definitely the best. So many features, so much, so many just great conversations I had with Greg Holland and others here about how to make it the best and what can really suit the needs of this county and these kids. I think really transformed it into something special. So I'm just, I couldn't be happier to say we have this bus. We're one of three counties and in the state that have a bus of this level of technology. And the great thing that we talked about the bus when we were in the design phase is that this bus is very, very flexible. It can go from elementary kids, fourth graders, first graders, all the way up to high school is the way it's designed. It just depends on what you put in it and who's teaching in it. So it's a flexible mobile unit that can move through the county and do a lot of things. The report I have is that hopefully it's run very well. I couldn't be happier that SGLP, Carrie and Lindsay have taken over the bus and built it with beautiful and fun and innovative types of programming for the kids to do. And we'd just like to say thank you to the county for letting us be part of such a special project with you all. And we'd like to be a partner with you on this bus in any way we can in the future. So if there's other things to come to work with it or how we can help you apply for grants. We just had the bus photographed this morning, so we're hoping to send it off for some educational awards. It would be helpful to guys. So if you can get us on the map, in Winchester, Kentucky, get a little national recognition. It's been really great work. And thank you so much for all of your support. It's been really unbelievable. We appreciate it. Well, sometimes you get jobs and sometimes you get fun activities. And the STEM bus was really work that didn't really seem like work. It was so much fun to work on that and it was really great. And I felt very prideful being there in Clark County. I went to GRC myself, I'm alumni from here and both of my kids. My daughter is now at UK, but she graduated last year from GRC. And then I have a son, like seventh grade, that was here just to come to the band. But it's just great, feels great to work in your own community and be part of something that I really feel like is next level. You know, I get to, being in my position, I get to work with a lot of people and I get to see a lot of fantastic things. And I can tell you that this STEM bus is state of the art and I've not seen anything that can touch it anywhere in the country as far as, we had people calling us from New Orleans a few weeks ago because they had seen pictures of the Clark County STEM bus. So I mean, that's how far reaching this can go for this community and hopefully for these kids. But I wanted to, I could talk for a long time, I don't want to take up everybody's time about it, but I did want to just open up any questions anyone would have from the board or from anyone out here that if you will have any questions that I would like to answer, I'd be glad to. Hopefully you got a chance to see it and if not, when you see it around town, just flag down and see if you can jump on board. Be part of the fun. So I look forward to seeing it around more and seeing how it would be impacted this community.
Thank you. I just really appreciate the versatility. Ms. Concedon, we know you're a former educator, we kind of talked about that too. It's that we get to bring kids out of classroom and it kind of opens their eyes to the real world and authenticity that they get to have in that learning experience. And it also gives us an opportunity to partner with other organizations. And so Ms. Seale and Mr. Elliott have also reached out and have connected with our extension office. It might open us up to like some summer programming that we're able to do and also expand it to other things beyond the typical A to, you know, A to three school day. And I don't know if Ms. Bush is here or not, but she goes, we had it go out to the mental health community event that we hosted last Thursday night around social media and the impacts and dangers and pitfalls that the community aware for social media. And so it was there and also had as a learning experience for the community to see some of these great things that were offered in Clark County. It's been a great advertisement for what public education can look like too.
Absolutely, and I see it, it wasn't quite probably ready to make debuts earlier during the Clark County football season, but I could see this coming out to sporting events in the community and kids being excited to say, I want to take my parents on board and show what the STEM bus does and see what I get to do at school. So I mean, I think it can definitely be a force in the community. When we initially designed it, it also said that it could be a real outreach product for you all as well. So it's designed as a STEM, but in the event of a COVID situation, you can load it up with coolers and food and you can go out to parking lots and you could actually do an outreach program for particular students that might need that at the time, whether it's food distribution or whether it's construction with teachers that need to get out as we all endured the last 18 months of how COVID can change the complexion of education too. So that's it. Well, thank you all so much.
Thank you all so much. Okay, item number five, update on Cardinal Lead Instructional Impact Overview and Analysis of Feedback for Instruction and Culture from Classroom Visits. Ms. Bonfield and Ms. Fithin.
She gets excited.
I'm Kelly Fithin, so good evening. I'm one of the instructional specialists for the district. So as Dr. McComas stated earlier, I'm going to get an overview of the instructional impact process. So we have our PowerPoint. All of them will be getting that up and I'll go ahead and start talking. As a district, as we focus on continued improvement and growth in the district, a cardinal lead team was formed. Lead is for leading excellence in all directions. And the lead team is comprised of building principals, assistant principals and central office leaders known as the base team. So as a district team, we're all joining forces to provide a more streamlined and structured focus on instruction. And all schools are involved in the process. Our primary goal of the instructional impact is not for just a walkthrough or an observation, but it's what we call I time. It's what I need as a teacher. Where we focus on students, what I need as a student, we also have to focus on that for the teacher as well. Our instructional impact process, it's very layered. We first start with a survey that we talk to administrators and feel and understand what the needs are in the building. From that, we create a schedule and then we design and generate our teams and our team assignments. Our teams within the buildings are very, or across the district are very intentional so that we can be layered in our focus. Our task is then to attend PLCs in every building. Then we visit classrooms and then we provide feedback via an instructional impact form. All schools are visited every single month. So every month, we have leaders from across the district going into the schools, providing an additional layer of support for the teachers. Each month, these assignments are given at each of our cardinal lead PLCs. And then they have four weeks to complete the assignment, do the feedback and they'll be given a new assignment at the next PLC. The instructional impact form is what they provide the feedback on. So once they visit a PLC and they visit a classroom, our leaders then focus and fill out a feedback form. This feedback form focuses on culture and instructional practices in the classroom and the feedback is instant. A teacher will receive feedback as soon as it's filled out, the building administrator and the observer leader themselves. Our feedback, we focus on a growth mindset with the intention that we can all improve and we can all learn. So we come in with that feedback. We have trained the lead staff on how to provide that feedback to our teachers and then we have been focused on that with our teachers as well. This first semester, the focus has been on culture and instruction and we will change that to engagement and instruction the second semester. The walkthrough timeframe is approximately 30 minutes. That is aligned to a certified evaluation mini observation. We also provide praise on our feedback form and we are doing that to pinpoint the strengths in the classroom and to build the classroom. And then we talk about questions to consider, so what can we do to improve in that classroom? Since this was introduced on September 23rd, we have received 103 responses by doing this. And again, this is an additional layer of support. The building principals are already doing their walkthrough observations for the certified evaluation plan and then they're doing just mini walkthroughs each and every day. But this is an added third layer of support for our teachers. So since we began September 23rd, we have 103 responses, which means 103 additional classrooms have been visited and provided feedback on top of what already goes on. 103 teachers have received feedback on culture and instructional practices. And again, this is above and beyond the observational scope that we already endure in the county. Just a little summary of what these results have led us to in the instructional practices. We have noted that 69% have selected teachers make effective use of wait time. And notice in the instructional practices form that the leaders can select more than one of these. So when they walk in a classroom, if they are observing more than one, they can select more than one thing. Discussions enable students to talk to one another without ongoing mediation by the teacher. That was at 47%. Learning tasks have multiple correct responses or approaches and/or demand higher order thinking. That was 50%. When necessary, the teacher makes adjustments to the lesson to enhance understanding, 41%. Teacher incorporates students' interest and questions into the heart of the lesson. That was at 40%. And finally, students have some choice in how they complete learning tasks and that was noted at 43%. So that was just based on instructional practices that was noted. On our praise section of the form, just a little bit of praise. I won't read through every single one of these, but this is just a snapshot of what is being delivered on the form. Some of the praise included students are working well independently and in small groups. They're helping each other. The math talk and vocabulary used in the beginning was engaging. Students are eager to learn and understand the material. You have empowered your students to help one another and they feel comfortable sharing their thinking with you and the class. So we're being very specific with our praise to the teachers. But nonetheless, we can all continue to grow and improve. So that is where our questions to consider come into play. So some of the questions to consider that we framed, how can you increase dialogue between students? Between student to student? Can room arrangement or seating charts be modified to help with misbehavior? What are some strategies to increase wait time while questioning? Maybe consider stopping through part of the lesson to allow for class discussions and to clear up misconceptions of the group. So we're all the while trying to provide feedback to the teachers to help them look at something in a different way and improve and continue our growth. So next steps, we will continue the I time process throughout the year. We will use this feedback to guide discussions with teachers and to guide instructional decisions. We will continue to monitor inquiry-based learning and we will use the feedback to guide our Cardinal Connections Academy, which will be our professional development academy that we will launch this summer. So I close with if we create a culture where every teacher believes they need to improve, not because they're not good enough, but because they can be even better, there is no limit to what we can achieve here in Clark County Public Schools.
And if I can just, Julie, I'm sorry, Ms. Bonfield, when's our next PLC?
January 13th.
January 13th is our next one and our focus is on MTSS systems. And so we're going to have Ms. Winkle, correct?
Megan Martin.
Martin, I'm sorry, we're going to have Ms. Martin here that's going to work with leadership on the MTSS system for response to intervention with behavior and academics.
And if I can kind of add to that a little bit, at our last PLC, our administrators had an opportunity to meet with departments within our district. So I know Alicia Ellis, our finance administrator's got to talk with her. Mr. Casey was there, Danny Fisher was there. So it gave everybody an opportunity to kind of sit down and talk with our departments to kind of see how things are going, questions, barriers, great things that are happening. And I really, you know, as a former administrator, it was really great to see those conversations taking place because it was those, kind of eliminating those barriers to kind of bridge and say, what can we do to support each other, what can we do to help, that kind of thing. So it was very, very good at that, that last one. So to kind of carry on from what Kelly had said, I wanted to come to you tonight to just talk about our needs assessment. In January, I will come to you for an approval of our comprehensive district improvement plan. So tonight, I just wanted to talk with you and kind of go over that needs assessment because our schools have already completed that. It was due November 1st. And so I wanted to, and in your packet, I just have the snapshots, PowerPoint, but you've got kind of the packet of what is in there. The purpose of the needs assessment is basically looking at multiple sources to determine that current reality that we're in, have conversations with stakeholders and work together as a district to come up with a plan of action to kind of help or to implement things that we need to, to improve or close some achievement gaps. So what you will see, these are just leadership teams. The very first question that the needs assessment asks is just to detail the process of what you do and as far as analyzing, applying data results, determine priorities for the needs. And so within each school in our district, there's a leadership team. They're having conversations with site-based councils about their current reality, academic and non-academic. Committees are formed and then just their full staff. So they're getting that communication within their building to develop their needs assessment, which then will go into their school improvement plan, which then I take and will develop the district improvement plan from there. So you can go through and I'm not going to go through it all of them, but you can kind of see every school. I broke it apart into GRC, RDC, Baker and then just our elementarys. And you can kind of tell what they are looking at. So they're meeting weekly, monthly in PLCs, discussing with teachers to determine specific needs. They're analyzing their data, talking about what's going on in the classroom, what's working, what's not working. A lot of our impact forms, I know that administrators are using those for communication to kind of see that picture, that snapshot within the building to kind of mirror and to help supplement with what they are also seeing in the classrooms. Also, non-academic data is analyzed too and we'll get to that in just a second. So the next one, just this is just the current state and these are examples of what they have to look at. If you go to the next one, yeah. So we have to, just district-wide, our, looking at our disaggregation tool with kindergarten readiness. We've looked at over a three-year period. Granted, the last three years have been a little different, but data is data and so we can look at that and see what we can do with it. But we can tell, last year, we had 344 students in kindergarten enrollment. We had 316 that were tested. They focus a lot on that participation rate, which was 91.6, which is a great participation rate for kindergarten. Then it tells you 48.7 were not ready for kindergarten and 51.3 were ready. So a lot of what we will take with that is what kind of kindergarten readiness things are we going to do? Implement within our district, jumpstart kindergarten? How was the transition from kindergarten to first grade? Really talk about those things, looking at our MTSS process, RTI, Response to Intervention, to help with that if we need to. The next one you'll see, and again, because of last year's data, a lot of the data was suppressed. And so the only thing really to report is our percent of students with an IEP scoring below proficiency in reading and math and then our free breakfast lunch scoring below proficiency. And then you can also see our gap group of students. So looking at reading and math, 72.5% are scoring below proficiency. And reading, 43% are scoring below proficiency in math. So you can see, of course, reading and math is an area. Again, I really feel the value of the impact forums and having conversations with our administrators. Our helping because we're training, we're looking on to professional development, what we can do to implement to bring that up. The next one, so this is just the picture and you'll see 1920 we did in test. And so this is just looking at that picture from 1819 and 2021. So overall, reading and math, we increased in novice and apprentice and we decreased in proficiency distinguished, which we've talked about that. So this is just our current reality. The next one, so we look at non-academic data. And these are just a few points that were listed at some of our schools for non-academic data. Teacher attendance at all the schools in the district was about 80%. Social emotional is a key component of our schools as we recover from COVID-19 pandemic. Multiple schools documented over 100 parent conferences within their school. And then looking in review of the 1920 school year, we had many schools that documented over 300 behavior referrals. So as we look at that, that is that need for that MTSS response to intervention. We will look at academic behavior data and put in some plans, consistent language within all of our buildings to help with that. Okay, so data trends and next steps, this is what you'll kind of see on our district improvement plan when I come to you in January. So we are going to implement an MTSS system within all buildings in our district. So we're going to kick that off in January. But it's not going, you know, it's going to be a collective effort that we all work together as a district within our buildings to develop this system. Response to intervention plans are more intentional with a focus on evidence-based interventions to close the achievement gap. So we're really going to look at streamlining what So we're really going to look at streamlining what programs we're using with our kids and making sure those are evidence-based. Of course, our curriculum maps, K through six in reading and math, we've got those district-wide PLC protocols. We've put those in at all buildings so that we're looking at what's happening in the classroom, looking at data and talking about those things. Building relationships and partnerships with community members and organizations. A strong focus on social emotional learning and professional development for teachers. And again, just working together as a district to analyze, observe, and implement strategies to close achievement gaps. And then our cardinal lead PLCs will occur one time a month, of course, to collaborate with our administrators on new initiatives within the district, and then, of course, reflect and refine what's already in place. And that's all I have, really quick. Any questions?
What does MTSS stand for?
So it's Multi-Tiered Systems of Support. So you'll hear a lot of tier one. We really, our goal is for eighty percent of our students to be performing at our tier one, which is our core instruction. Fifteen percent is our tier two, which is usually about a year below, performing a year below. Our students that are in tier three are usually two or more years below. We want that to be at five percent or less. And it's with academic data and our behavior data as well. So that's just really targeting specifically and looking at three. We like to triangulate the data, so look at three different data points. In doing that, to kind of collectively come together and develop plans that help.
Thank you.
And the other trend that typically happens in school districts is that once students are identified that need extra support, we see schools across the Commonwealth in the United States that you push those kids out to get support with other small groups. And we want to have a hybrid model. We want to make sure that those supports are in place, but we also want to be able to bring others, other experts into the classroom to help provide that support so that it helps the classroom teacher also increase capacity so that you can have a stronger tier one, which then reduces how many students will have to be pushed out to. So that's what that MTSS system is, that we're going to refine and continue to develop.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number seven. Consider approval of cafeteria manager and assistant manager position proposed stipend for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year from the food nutrition budget.
Okay, Ms. Lowry, I don't know if you want to come up in case there are questions, but we went back and reviewed, Ms. Lowry was able to do some surveys and get information back from assistant managers and, you know, like their, her managers have advocated for, the need is, is there to warrant the additional stipend. We did go through and look at all of the budgets. So this is being proposed to come out of food service budget, not general fund budget and not ESSER monies. And the reason for that is the ESSER monies when Ms. Alicia Ellis, I don't know, did she say? There she is, sorry. When Ms. Ellis went back and looked at all of those, since this is an additional stipend due to the strains of COVID, we actually already have that in there as a line item. So we were able to do that. Our first payment went out to staff. So we don't want to replicate it within the ESSER dollars. So Ms. Lowry has her own, that's one of the only departments that generates revenue. So it's appropriate to be able to take it out of her revenue. She and I have gone back and analyzed that. Ms. Ellis has done that. So the supervisor stipend for the manager is recommended to stay at the one thousand dollars. And then the assistant manager stipend will be at five hundred dollars for the school year only. No, we don't have to.
Just giving you FYI, we like to, except to you if you want to keep going.
Okay.
It's went down.
We are not live streaming. Is that an issue?
Do y'all want to keep going or, because I mean, there was evidently several watching and it went down.
I don't know if it was on today at all. Like, we're not required to do it.
I don't know. That was just what I, it seems, we're not live streaming, it went down.
Was we live streaming in the beginning and it just went down? Oh, we haven't from the, from the very beginning?
We have not been live streaming.
Was it, it wasn't on the notice either, was it, though?
No.
So it can be recorded and somebody can go back.
Yeah, we're recording. We're not required to do that.
I just wanted to stop you before you leave.
Yeah, no, 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 we're recording and we'll have it up late, uploaded later. So back to Ms. Lowry. So we got, that's okay. So we have assistant manager stipend that was vetted and at five hundred dollars. Again, for this year only, and that the, the manager stipend was remaining at the one thousand initial recommendation, and that the funding will come out of the food service budget. She also has some, another issue with a, an assistant manager. They, you know, had a loss this week, and so we do share our condolences with her family. But we felt really good about the proposal. Do you want to share some of the extra, I'm kind of putting you on the spot, I know. Do you want to share some of the extra work duties that we?
Here's the things that I'll just bring up, were things that were obviously repeated by several of our managers. And the biggest issue has been and still is, is that they are having, meeting the managers or having to spend so much more time in their office on the computer with Tina Banks, the district supervisor, and myself, and GFS, and anybody we can get a hold of, Clem or whatever. They're having to spend so much more time there than the duties that they normally would have been doing out on the floor as far as, you know, production and that type of paperwork, production records, menus, you know, making sure that everything's out there and that everybody's got the correct things as far as the menu items, the serving utensils and all that kind of, that that kind of production oversight would have typically been done by the manager. And so now the assistant manager is kind of taking some of those duties where they might have been, you know, doing inventory and stuff like that, or even running a register because we're shorthanded. Now they're having to do all these other duties that the manager would have overseen on the floor. And that, that causes everybody to have to do, spend more time and do more. And unfortunately, I will say, the, the case has been, because of the staff shortage and the extra work, we have, and you all may have seen it, there has been quite a bit of extra time and overtime. And it's because of all of this extra work that hasn't, that's having to be done.
So what changed from the last meeting to this meeting where we were going to go with, use ESSER funds, and now we're not going to use ESSER funds?
Well, when we went back to vet that again, it was the fact that we already had that three thousand dollar one-time stipend for additional COVID work that needed to be done, that was already given to all staff. So then this would have been like basically another line item for that when it's isolated to food service in this respect, so.
But if we approved it last time, it would have went to ESSER.
Well, it, we would have been approving it, but I, we would have had to come back and say that we would have, we're going to recommend, like, it's approved, because we, we wouldn't have approved it if we didn't knew we couldn't sustain it out of multiple funding streams. So if that got kicked back, then we would have been able to come back and say, this is something that we're going to have to pull out of general fund and then move to, to that. And we could still do that, but food service has their own budget. Again, it's one of the few departments that generates revenue. Ms. Lowry and I have talked about that. There's projections beyond just the thousand and the five hundred because you have the additional fringe benefits that are associated with that. We just felt like it was an appropriate, appropriate way to meet the needs of her department that again are kind of isolated and not, you know, everybody's dealing with a lot of extra things right now. But this is one that is causing a lot, a lot of issues for food service.
Food service has their own challenges right now with the budget.
They don't necessarily have challenges with the budget. It's the workload and the supply chain issues that, that they're struggling with the most.
I'll interject on the budget, and I'm sure Alicia can do the same. What we're operating on right now, I should have brought my profit law statement in, but because we've been in school and we've been feeding students since August, our outlook in our budget is humongously better than what it was from last year. When the auditor looked at the budget from last year. You have to understand, he was looking at last year.
Yeah.
Since August of this year, we are definitely doing well and making huge strides. So I don't feel uncomfortable with this coming out of the food service budget because I feel like the staff deserve it, so.
Yeah, we, we went back through all of those things. But yeah, to your point, what we were talking about last, last month was also when the auditor was here, and that was the prior year's reflection. And so her account is in much, much better shape.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm not, I'm not nervous about it. Believe me, last year I was there, right?
No, but I appreciate that, yeah.
So your recommendation is, is the thousand and five hundred?
Yes, sir. And I understand that you all wanted us to look at increasing that and adding, and then increasing for the assistants. And again, not saying that anyone does not deserve more money, but we felt like this was, you know, met the initial request, or, you know, the initial recommendation, and also gave consideration to the other things that we saw that were concerns for assistant manager workload, and was reasonable with the fringe benefits that were added on to make sure that we could absorb that easily out of the food service budget. So I feel, we both feel very comfortable with, with that amount.
Will be a present in the last meeting. My understanding is there'd be a special run, payroll run? Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah.
Becky's good, and this is what Becky's comfortable, it's coming out of her.
I'll make a motion to approve a recommendation for a thousand dollars for cafeteria managers and five hundred for assistant managers.
Motion by Mr. Talby. I'll second. All those in favor, or any more discussion, sorry? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item. Item number eight. Consider approval of new job descriptions for the Department of Analyst and Department District Specialist. Ms. Ellis.
Evening, everybody. Hopefully you've had a chance to read through the proposal and the rationale behind what we are requesting tonight. Are there any questions? Do you need any further explanation?
You want to do the skinny?
Do the skinny?
Do the skinny?
So the skinny is essentially our certified payroll clerk resigned last week as ten months. So that is a very big position for us, a half of a payroll. But also, as you recall, on multiple converse situations, we have stood here and talked about how we are planning in the future to restructure finance to bring red book fully to central office processing versus how we're currently doing it individually at all seven schools for that fraud prevention oversight. And we started that process to a degree when we brought five, four elementarys and Baker in, but we still have RDC and GRC operating out there on their own. So in order to get that full capacity in, we really need a higher level paid position within finance to help manage that compliance oversight and take on a heavier workload than even our clerk positions have at this point, which is still a massive amount of work in itself with those clerk positions, but we're needing that. So we thought this would be the perfect opportunity to go ahead and start that process. That's not to say that we won't be standing here before you at another future date asking you for even an extra employee in the finance department because we need that. But that's going to come with the wage study. So as we look at the wage study and comparing ourselves to other districts and other models of districts who are operating in the same kind of model that our finance department, it might warrant another position. We might get into this process where we're at and how we have already restructured might be sufficient. We don't know that till we get into it, but we do know we need a little bit more than we have right now. So that's the point of the finance analyst position that is been put before you, is to create that for a step up from where our clerk level is. Two-fold to that, we have two job descriptions, obviously. There's the finance specialist. So in looking at this option of adding this finance analyst, we started looking at all the people who are paid on the same salary table schedule. And there's about eight of them, and they all have different titles. But they're all being paid the exact same amount and essentially doing the same type of workload. It's just through in different departments. You've got HR and finance and food service and special ed and out in the schools. And so we were just trying to, as part of the wage study that you will see at future, bringing to you is starting to combine job descriptions. We're trying to get more lean on our job descriptions and lean on our salary tables, and this is one step towards that. So as we brought you new descriptions, we thought it would be best, let's go ahead and start that model that we want to start coming in the new school year. So everyone who's on that grade eighteen level is going to be a specialist for whatever department they're in. So I would have finance specialist or an accounts payable specialist. They can tag the front of it however they want for their department, but they'd be a specialist paid on a day following this general job description.
So with that current position that she's talking about, moving the pay grade eighteens from clerks or whatever the other tagline is that we have used for these multiple job descriptions, like she said, it's going to go to, you know, nutrition specialists or accounts payable specialists or HR specialists. Nobody's getting a pay raise. I just want to make sure that that's really clear. We're not requesting that anybody changes pay. We're basically just saying, instead of having eight job descriptions, we want to condense them down to one so that in Munis, the system that we use to run finances, we have one code that's then associated to these multiple departments instead of having all these multiple codes and then eight job descriptions. So it's really just cleaning up paperwork so that our system can run more efficiently. And also, it reduces error because then you're not going to end up having people jump on different things. And then we have like accounting errors because of that when something gets coded incorrectly. Always will get fixed, but you could have something that gets coded incorrectly. So this is just cleaning up multiple job descriptions. We're just taking advantage of, you know, this, you know, we hate losing her, but it's just an opportune time to make sure that we can condense all of these together. So now she's going to talk about the, you already talked about the analyst position. So we're requesting that that clerk position, basically, we don't want to refill it, which is now going to be the specialist if you all choose to bring those together. And instead, we are going to create the analyst position now instead of requesting that later so that we can manage those red book systems in-house a lot better. Now, this year, you didn't see any findings, thankfully, on our audit because we weren't in school last year. But in the past, you know, you've had a lot of those. So I, we can't guarantee that this is going to eliminate those, but from what we have heard from the auditor and from the consultant that we've talked with, that it's going to drastically reduce those errors from happening on audit findings, due to red book.
Any more discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the new job description for department analyst and department district specialist.
A motion by Ms. Hendrix.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Richardson. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes four to zero. Okay, we are, item nine, consider approval to create and post finance analyst position in the finance department?
We just separated those just in case you all weren't comfortable with that. Like, you could approve the position, I mean, sorry, you could approve the job description, and then if we needed to hold off on it, we could do that later. But we're hoping that based on number eight, that you are also willing to go ahead and allow us to post that analyst position so that we can start that new structure.
I make the motion. To create and post the position? I'll second.
A motion by Ms. Coniston, I'm second by Ms. Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four up, four to zero. Okay, you want to pick it up from ten?
Sure. We're on ten?
We're on ten.
Okay. Consider approval of pay application fifteen twenty-five dash oh four to Ross Toronto, architects for the Clark County Preschool Center project. BG twenty-one dash two forty-seven, the amount of nine thousand two hundred and twenty-three forty-one.
It's coming along beautifully too, isn't it, Mr. Stump?
I'm sorry?
I said, and it's coming along beautifully too, isn't it, Mr. Stump?
This is, works for schematic design, which I think architects are right to tail end of. So I think next, next month, we're prepared to bring back several options for you to consider. We'll post them in the boardroom as we had before when we, when we did the Cherrys' projects. They'll allow you to view those weeks in advance. So billing tonight is for the schematic design process for the architects for the preschool. So drilling tonight is for the schematic design process for the architects for the preschool. Has everything else been approved off of like the grounds, you know, where they were, you know, we approved in the past to make sure that the grounds were suitable for the preschool? And I know there were more studies being done. Is that still going on or is that done? Actually, we have S and M and E doing their surveys starting next week. We had to get the cattle off the property and that took us a little while, but prepare some fencing and get the cattle off. They wouldn't come on with the cattle on the property. So we've, we've addressed that and they're ready to start next week. Drilling will probably be after the winter, you know, early spring we'll start doing the drilling and then I'll be able to answer your question a little more specifically. I'll make a motion to, a motion to approve item ten that's written.
Motion by Mr. Talby.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Constein. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Okay, item number eleven. Discuss, consider approval of first reading of amendments to student representative board policy zero one point one. Mr. Harris, Dr. McComas and Ms. McCoy.
You want to go first?
Sure. Ms. McCoy and I did not get to meet like we had talked about, whether it be because her work schedule or my school schedule. So because we didn't get to have that back and forth one-on-one, I'm first suggesting, since Dr. McComas got the legal perspective side of things, I think that we should look at their proposed amendments versus mine. So like I said, I didn't get to have that from a legal perspective.
Well, Ms. McCoy and I had that from the legal perspective, taking into consideration the revisions that, that you had proposed. So you, do you want me to go ahead and look at the second one?
Yeah.
All right. So the first section under corporate powers, of course, there's no changes to any of that. This is kind of a hybrid model that looked at the Paducah, Woodford and I think Gallatin structure that they had, also kept in line with some of the conversation that we had here with what Mr. Harris initially brought, as well as protecting the application process. So those other three districts that we looked at, they were using elections. So it was all usually centered around either a general student election or student voice came from student council. I was like, what's it called? Came from student council or even student council themselves were the groups that were, the election took place from. So either student council ran the elections broad or you had to be on student council in order to be on the student representative. So we initially had talked about an application, so we didn't go back and look at that. But the structure is the same from these other districts. So the yellow that you're looking at are things that Ms. McCoy and I found from those other district policies as well as considerations that you all had provided. And then the green are the discussion points that we had at the last board meeting and had. Ms. Hale, it's actually the, let me see, are you on the?
Right beside each other.
We need to pull up the one that says.
McComas dash McCoy.
Yeah, McComas dash McCoy, I'm sorry. That's okay, no, thank you. Okay, so then the yellow comes from that research that Ms. McCoy and I did. And then the green is protecting the discussion that we had from that previous meeting with the work that Mr. Harris did. Strike throughs are things that were in the original document that are, you know, being taken out. And then all of it kind of put together is the recommendation. So we'll start with the student board representative in order to ensure appropriate information and participation from students. In the system, one student board representative shall be appointed annually from George Rogers Clark to serve as a non-voting advisor to the Board of Education. The student board representative shall be entitled to attend and participate in all board meetings or in board meetings held in open session, may express opinions and advise the board on student-related issues as deemed appropriate by the board chair or the superintendent. So it does give a little bit more control to especially the board chair when we're in open session where you can kind of direct that conversation in that meeting. And that was again at the documentation that we saw from the other districts. Then that next category is requirements for student representative to the board. So students choosing to seek appointment for the student representative position must attend George Rogers Clark High School for at least two years, be a current resident of Clark County, except for the initial representative shall begin on September twentieth. So that's referring to Mr. Harris. And then maintain no less than a three-point O GPA, grade point average or higher before the time of appointment, which we had initially.
I've got a question.
Uh huh.
And this may be a Brenda question, actually. Did it change where we, we bring in students from out of district? You can now, if you supply transportation, your student can now, did that change?
No, that's not what this is referring to.
I know that's not what this, like, but if that is the case, did KD approve that to where?
That's approved for all districts. Any district can have out of residence students.
As long as you provide transportation.
Right.
Your own transportation.
Right.
So is that, that's, because after we talked, I thought about that. So is that going to knock a student out that's getting transportation that's been in our district for?
It will, but at the consideration from what board told me, that was a concern that you all had. And so I do recommend that if that's something that I heard from more than two people, that you should put it in your policy, that you need to be a current resident of Clark County.
This was just something I got to thinking about because, I mean, if this student's been going to school there for such and such time, they're providing their own transportation, they still are a student of Clark County.
But their parent wouldn't be eligible to be on the board. So I think that was in line with how you elect board members. But again, it's not referring to Mr. Harris.
I'm taking him out of the equation.
And if you don't, and if you don't like that, that's a, and then he can take out.
This was just something that I, you know, after we spoke, I was sitting there thinking, you know, just going through. And that was something that came through my mind because we were talking about that. But, you know, I'm, whatever the majority of the board wants, I'm fine either way. That was just something that if this kid had been in our district, this.
Okay, so can we back up just a little bit since, can we go back to the very, not to the first section of yellow? And that way we'll take it piece by piece. So if there's any changes that need to be made, I'm kind of tracking those appropriately because this is just our first reading. So in that first paragraph, do you all have any questions or concerns that we need to consider in that first paragraph?
Yeah, I do. I don't have a clear understanding on how the student representative will be elected or appointed from the school. I do, I do not want it to be a popularity contest at the school.
That's why we kept it as the application process. So it, that will be down in here that you'll see that.
So, but who is actually evaluating the application?
The school board? Committee that you all set up.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, that was in the original policy that we had talked about.
Okay, because there, there needs to be a proper procedure.
Yeah.
For, for students to apply. And then the committee needs to review it. And if the committee is appointed by the board, then I'm okay with that.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I told Warren before we started talking. I said, because you don't want to get into an election, an overall election with students and it does become a popularity contest. But to mitigate that, some districts went to, the election was only for student council representatives. And so then if you backed up, some student council, some student council members are seated based on a similar application process, so there was extra vetting. Then the student board rep was selected from the student council. So we didn't even do that. We just maintained the original application process that we had originally set up.
Because the student council, I'd rather not have to pick it from the student council.
Yeah, you want, you want more options.
Yeah.
And more opportunities for kids too.
I'm fine with the first, that first paragraph personally, I don't know what.
Well, I just want to.
Yeah, I mean, after, yeah. And like I said, and if, if the, like, and I'm not switching, I know what we talked about. I'm not switching.
No, that's okay.
That was just something that we discussed and then I got to thinking about that and I'm like, okay, so, it's my understanding that, you know, some are allowed to come play sports in different places and that. And I'm like, so we can do that, but we can't.
I'll, to that concern as well, and it's something I didn't really think about till we said here, you've got a lot of kids in split custody situations. They may have one parent in one county and one in the other. And I don't know, do you want to get into that inquiry of what county they're living in?
You would have a custodial residency that Ms. Bush would have on file when I see. So again, just taking the advice, the considerations that I had heard. So if that's not something you all want, that can be something that we remove.
I mean, I just, it could be, I don't know.
You're taking also, we have a lot of teachers that don't live in Clark County. And you're going to take every one of their children that come to Clark County with them out of the, out of the mix?
Well, I think that's a great point, but personally, I think you, it should not be a school employee's child sitting on the Board of Education. I mean, that might be another stipulation that we need. It's not, but that's a good point. That might be something else that I don't think you should have a, you know, that could be another perceived conflict of interest that, whether it is or it isn't, that you wouldn't want to saddle on a student.
Well, this group that we form, they could have those in mind, couldn't they? That could be their parameters when they're looking at choosing someone.
Yeah, well, you all are, you would set up the committee annually on who's going to select the student. But the eligibility criteria is kind of outlining your policy. So if that's not something you're interested in, we can take that out. If that's something that you do feel, you know, like needs to be in there, we can leave that in. But the application process wouldn't necessarily reflect the eligibility because we're going to a, we're going to, we're going to deem, we're going to vet that before we accept an application.
I just don't want to knock somebody out that, that could potentially be like a really, really good board member, board student rep.
Advisor.
Whatever.
Well, it is student rep.
Yeah, and, you know, but because they're, like Ms. McCoy said, they're living in, you know, Fayette County with mom, but mom's transporting them back and forth, but, or, you know, I don't know the answer.
I, I don't like that either. I'd rather for that to be taken out just because there's so many different circumstances that could come up. And if you're here for two years.
I like the two-year thing.
I think that should be, and it was a senior, wasn't it? Did I read that?
Yeah, I think we did.
Well, in some of the other ones, yeah, you all had had a little bit of that conversation last time. So it can either be a senior only, but it does say that if you're, if you've been here for at least two years, well, that means that you're freshman or sophomore year. So then you could be eligible as a junior. So then when you get to that term section, we'll talk about in a little bit, then it gives a student an opportunity. Not that they're automatically a two-term student rep, but they would have to reapply. And then the committee would determine if they, if it is warranted for them to have two terms on as a student rep. So because of it saying at least two years, that could be a freshman and a sophomore. So then you are opening it up to juniors if you have at least two years. Now, if you want it to only be a senior, you could say at least three years. And then that's going to protect you to have only a senior. Again, I'm, I'm open.
I mean, to me, they need to have their, their high school priority to be in Clark County before they serve on the Board of Education.
That's a, that's a good point.
I would like to leave the live in the county thing on there just because I think it should mirror, you know, the requirements of the, you know, I can't live in Richmond and run for Clark County School Board. I just think it should be a similar requirement for a student representative.
But then in the same sense to Mr. Talby's point, that's also an incentive for our teachers is you can run your kids to school no matter which county you live in.
Well, I understand that, but I just think that you forego other options by coming, living in Madison County or another county and coming to school in Clark County too. And I just think it's an opportunity cost and it's just one of those things.
Well, you're punishing a kid because they, because of a choice that they can't make. They're not, they're not making the choice to live in another county. That's a guardian position. You're punishing a kid for that.
I don't really see it as that. I think that there are rules and parameters to most things. And I think that even in other, in other situations in the other county, they're losing different things too. I think it's just, you know, how, how it is. And I, myself would feel comfortable leaving that in there. And no, no disrespect to your argument, that's just my personal conviction on the matter.
Yeah, I find a kid that comes to Clark County for their career in high school in good standing, you could make the argument they're more committed to Clark County than someone lives in Clark County because they're making the extra effort to get here. And I think we're single pointing, I think we're pointing, we're signaling people out by leaving that in there and it's, it's not right.
I mean, how many out of district students do we have?
To be exact, I'd have to get back and look.
I mean.
We have them from K to twelve.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, I am one, for what it's worth, I mean.
Oh.
Well, we know, that's why we put that in there.
You're pointing it.
I didn't know until you gave me your paper to sign, so.
Dr. McComas, the other districts that have a student rep, do they require their student to?
They didn't have it in their policy, but when we reached out and talked to people, it was a point of contention for some of them. Actually, I believe it was KSBA, they didn't recommend having a student representative policy. So you have things that are all over.
Over the place.
You ha, yeah, you have recommendations from, no, it's a good thing, this is how you do it, student council. I mean, it's, it's very open from what, from what we saw to, you know, not recommended to, if you're going to do it, do it this way. And then again, having these kinds of conversations. I will say if you all choose to leave it in there, again, no disrespect, you know, I had, I had teacher kids too. You know, I was, I was a teacher and administrator in a district where we didn't live. And I, I think that's an issue for, for a student to be on a board rep. So I would say that they cannot be a student, I mean, a child of, an employee. And that's to protect the student, also to protect the employee. It may seem unfair on one hand, but there's, you know, a lot of, a lot of concerns I would have as superintendent or as a parent for my child if he or she wanted to be a student representative.
Well, I think it mirrors the way that it's done for the rest of us. Because we have to live in the district and we also cannot have, you know, family, close family in, in the district employed. So I think to keep it mirrored as much to our position, I think it stays clean and in line with it.
Then we're contradicting ourselves because we're calling him a representative, not him. This person, a representative, we've taken it from a, what was it originally?
It was still a student representative.
Because, I mean, we went from one thing and, and now to this is what they're going to do to now we're calling them just a representative, well, okay, it's still representative.
Still a representative.
Yeah, to, but the, the expectations, I guess, have changed somewhat. So if we want them to align with what we're doing, then we need to, they need to be doing as such, correct?
I would not say is exactly as such, no.
So I don't think you can, I, I mean, to just, I don't know if you can really, or should, we should mirror our requirements to a student's requirements when that, when that student is not given the same authority that we have, okay? We're elected officials, we have, we have voting rights, we, this student official does not. So I don't know if it's the right thing to mirror that or not, just because it's a different position. And it almost goes back.
Position, they're here to, to learn from how things are done.
That's exactly where I'm going. So maybe, you know, I feel like we have not discussed what the expectations are of this position very well.
No, we really haven't planned, I don't know. I mean, it was a great idea, I mean.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
We're just kind of, now we're, we're actually backward planning instead of forward planning. Because I feel like we have so many questions as things begin to arise, you know, and after I talked to a lot of people from other districts, they were like, we're not going there. Because I think what we're kind of experiencing, you know, we've got a lot of unknowns. And, you know, you just, we want to make sure that we protect the student representative and that they're not thrown into a situation that might be overwhelming. Because, you know, I mean, I'm going to be honest, being a board member is not easy. And so I can't imagine being eighteen, seventeen or eighteen and, and being part of that process. So we have to be very careful in how we, we move forward. I personally feel like they need to be a resident of Clark. And I also agree that they shouldn't be an employees. They should not have a relationship with an employee, you know, a student, a child. Because I just, I think of my boys, I would not want them.
Yeah.
To have that opportunity to serve. Because I just, I think of my boys, I would not want them to have that opportunity to serve. And I, and, and I see it as a, as an employee and a mom, I, I feel like they would hear too much from me at home. Um, and, you know.
And/or they wouldn't, and people assume they would.
Right.
And so whether you live in the district or you don't, um, that's protecting the student from their parent working in the district.
And, and nothing against living outside of the district, but I feel like, um, you know, parents are taxpayers, and so they have an, more of an invested interest in our community. Um, and out-of-districts, you know, we've had out-of-district students, I mean, oh, Lord, I mean, for thirty-some years. But the thing about out-of-district students is the funding doesn't come from us. The funding's coming from another, the other district. They pay us.
Right.
You know, we get their, their SEEK funding, so, you know, they're, you, you see what I'm saying? They're still paying to educate that student, but they're paying us.
Could this be a legal issue, though? If we, if we segment this, and they have to be out of, they have to be a Clark resident, it's almost like you can't play football because you're not in Clark County.
I'm not aware of any legal issues. That's not to say one won't arise. I, I looked, when I, when this all came up, I looked to see if there was any statutory guidance. KSBA offered very little. There's, I said, did they, when this became an option, did you put out some literature? Nothing.
'Cause to me, it almost is a quality issue, where you're taking some student's rights away for being a student in Clark County.
That would be the case if it was a protected class, like race, or age, or sex, or orientation, or anything like that. But as far as I'm, I'm not aware of an issue.
No, this, I could say this is a program. This is a program. So it'd be just like a program, any sort of program at the high school. So if you were a student at the high school, if you're eligible, you should be eligible to participate in any program at the high school. Is, is that not the case? Any student at the high school could participate in.
Out-of-districts.
At FLA, or any club, or.
It's also like saying you have to have a certain GPA, or you have to.
Yeah, you're, you're putting other stipulations, like with NHS or Beta, it's not a discriminant, yeah.
Yeah, just in general, if, you know, as long as you're not discriminating based on a protected class, such as, you know, disability, sex, age, race, gender orientation, that sort of thing, just as a general legal issue. But that's not to say a case couldn't come up tomorrow, because this is certainly in charted territory. I think it's, I think it's board discretion. I don't have any, I don't, I really don't have any legal preference, which we, I guess, I think is true.
Bless you. And we are still on our first reading, so what I'm, what I'm hearing is, uh, more are saying the student should be a resident within Clark County. Um, student cannot be a child or a stepchild of an employee. How do you all feel about that? Regardless if they're a resident or a non-resident. So there's, again, another, you know, back to Mr. Talby's point, there's another, you know.
Stepchild or child.
What about a le, what if have a legal guardian that is an employee? Because you might have a kid, you know, maybe raising a niece or nephew, or have a kid foster carer in your care.
And we'll model the language that we find on our, like, enrollment forms.
So niece, nephew, that's fine, in-laws, fine, all that's.
Yeah, if you're in charge of the child, parent, stepchild, or a legal guardian, then, um, you know, they're residing in your home. Kinda going back to that example that Ms. Concedon and I were talking about, that, that's, uh, you know, my kid struggled enough just hav, having their mom working in the school, let alone.
Oh, I'm, I'm a child, a parent that worked in the school system. I know, deal is too, so, I mean, we've lived it, yeah.
Are there other stipulations? Missed two meetings? Are they dismissed?
Well, we address, well, we address attendance in here, and we address behavior. So can we, can we talk about those two? Like, I feel like we're set on the living in the county. What about the, um, you know, and I did not have that in here, but what about the student, uh, with the employee? You know, the child of the employee. Do you all agree with that, or?
I kinda do.
All right, so that second, uh, section of yellow says they may not have any unexcused absences during the year, and so that's at school. Okay, that's at school, having good attendance at school. Um, so have any unexcused absences during the year in which they're appointed, and must have maintained an exemplary discipline record during their academic career, and continue to do so while serving as a student representative. Um, I think that is, you know, something that we would expect of our student representative and of ourselves, that we are, you know, of exemplary, uh, discipline.
So they, if they get any of this, I'm just trying to follow along here. If they have an unexcused absence, what happens?
Not an unexcused absence, but if you start to see a pattern of unexcused absences develop, uh, after this, you know, if Mr. Harris here decides, I'm a senior, and it's, and it's April, and I'm not gonna come in, then we would have some issues, 'cause he's, you know, have an unexcused absence.
And maybe, I'm, 'cause it says, like, may not have any unexcused absences.
That's, that's during the year in which they were appointed. So if they're gonna, in order to apply, that would be part of, we, that will be part of the application process, that they have to say that they've not had any unexcused absences. You have parent notes, you have doctor's notes, so they can have excused absences, but they should not have any unexcused absences in order to qualify to be on the board.
Got you.
Okay, yeah. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I was just trying, I'm just catching, okay, I'm good.
Okay, so that white, uh, I'm not gonna read, 'cause that's already in there. The term, again, this was already in it, now I'm just kinda creating those subcategories that the other policies had. So term, again, the white is the same, uh, so Mr. Harris had added, just clarifying, one school year, uh, before the school year has elapsed. So again, if, uh, once the, the student rep graduates, they're no longer a member, or if, uh, obviously if they left the di, the district. Okay, so then dropping down to, uh, the term will begin summer. So this was a conversation that went back and forth, um, that we, that we all had. But June fir, like, when Mr. Harris graduates, it will be in, uh, May.
Hopefully May.
Ho, hopefully May. Uh, but it will be June first to that May thirty-first. And if the graduation doesn't happen, and it does happen in June, then that June first would be an overlap between the, having the new board rep with the current board rep. So that's still an appropriate time, the June, just, and it stays in line with June first to the May thirty-first. Uh, that's what the other policies also replicated, and some of them had different dates, but I felt like that was an appropriate time. And again, this is going back to what we talked about just a moment ago, Mr. Talby, that students may be appointed to a second term, and that's based on, if we keep the language in there, that they will serve, they will be enrolled in GRC for two years. If you want this to be limited more to seniors, then we would change that to one term, and then we would need to change that other language to three years, three years. I can hold up the right number of fingers. So what are your all's thoughts on junior and/or senior? And you can still say to serve one term, but it could be a junior, one year, you're one term, and then you have a new student rep coming on board, and they're still just a one-term student rep. Or you can allow for a second term, if that student rep happens to have been a junior, based on the other two years.
I think it should be a senior thing.
I kinda do too.
Okay, so I'm gonna just make notes here, and then I'll go back and clean this up. Okay, so senior.
I just think maturity level.
Well, I mean, they, they're working for it.
Okay, I'm seeing another, yes.
So you're gonna make them three years, or are you still gonna keep it at two?
What?
That they have to be a, um, student for three years, or two years, if you're gonna be a senior?
What about two prior years?
Yeah, we can leave it at two years, and then just stipulate that they would need to be entering into their senior year. So if you like that, that they're a senior, we can keep it at two years, or we can change it to three years.
They can move in their sophomore year, and do a sophomore year, junior year, and still, um, be able to do the application, so.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
So then take out that student's may be appointed to a second term, 'cause that would never happen.
Right, that will never happen.
We would specify in requirements that they be a senior, since they're on term right now.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I wrote down, uh, this is gonna be isolated to seniors only, and then it would remove, be the removal of the second term option. Agreed? Okay. Then, unexpired terms. So let's say that the student moves.
Yeah.
Okay, right, so middle of their senior year, the student moves. So if a student representative vacancy on the board shall occur, it will be filled then by the superintendent and the principal. So I would work with Mr. Keen to select, uh, a new student, and that might be where we would pull from, like, say, student council or some other group, or open the application process up all, altogether. And then we would be able to have, uh, a new student rep. And then that student would only obviously serve for the remainder of their senior year, and then we would just go back to the application process. That was also showing up in other district policies.
Why would we, I mean, why, why wouldn't we just go to this, just do the selection the same?
You could, it might take a little longer, but.
Even if you choose not, I mean, do you have to fill it, if that was that?
You could choose not to fill it too. I mean, if it's, um, you know, April. If it's April.
I think it should be at the board's discretion, if that's, whether they wanna fill it or not.
So I will add language about, uh, or at the board's discretion. And then Ms. McCoy and I will revisit this to make sure that the language is appropriate for the policy.
You could say will be filled at the board's discretion by the superintendent.
Okay.
And principal.
All right, uh, so skipping down to those, um, student rep guidelines. Again, same language that was already existing in, um, our current policy. I did some bullets there, just to kinda organize it a little bit better. And those last bullets were things that showed up in other policies. So the first one there in yellow is the student board rep, or the student representative will attend an orientation meeting organized and conducted by the superintendent and staff prior to participation in any regular meeting of the Board of Education. Uh, we didn't do a, uh, very structured orientation, but I did do a passion meeting with Mr. Harris, and we talked about the board and dynamics of the board, and things that he was interested in, and how, um, that work would, um.
Does the student rep, will they be going to, like, or when we go to, um, KSBA, do they, do they allow them to attend that?
Uh, that would be something I could ask about, but that wouldn't be the objective. The orientation would be by myself, and/or having Ms. McCoy come in, and/or having, um, you know, Mr. Powell from KSBA, but, or.
I would think you would want your board chair to be, 'cause if it's gonna be, they're representing, they're with the board.
Right, but I would work, organize that for us.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
It don't say board chair, though.
Yeah, it doesn't.
It says the superintendent and staff.
I believe I saw that there was a section for student members at KSBA on the agenda.
So we can check on that?
Yeah, that's something.
Okay, do you all like superintendent and board chair to do the orientation? More or less, it's just a nice and formal meeting, or a structure, you can make it as, you know, as big or as intimate as you want, but then you have that opportunity to, to meet and onboard with that student before.
Yeah, 'cause your student rep should really be kinda shadowing with your board chair a little bit, because they're, they're working as a board rep.
Okay, so I'm gonna.
Whatever they are, can, whatever.
Like a mentor or something.
Yeah, I'm gonna add that language.
'Cause it would be, I mean, it's kinda like, if they were wanting, if their goal was to be the superintendent, they would be working hand in hand with superintendent, you know what I'm saying? Like, they're working, they need to be going with all stakeholders.
Yeah.
So that way, everybody's on the same page.
So I'm gonna add that to that section.
And it takes it off just you, too.
Well, it would've been organized, just like when I'd asked you to come in, you know, like, we've done that. It's not, I wouldn't be the one kinda taking charge of getting it together, but I would've, you know, pulled in, pulled in other people.
The board chair.
For KSBA, and so however we wanna do that. But I went ahead and will add board chair. So the next bullet is the student representative must understand that the board activities hold priority over most other engagements that might conflict, you know, so, um, ballgame, board meeting.
I'm gonna go to the ballgame.
Yeah, I'm gonna come to the board meeting. Uh, so, again, common language. The student representative will not have access to board attorney without consent of the superintendent or the board chair. I think that's appropriate, uh, which we've kinda already modeled anyway. The student representative will first work through the superintendent and the board chair to request any matter to be placed before the full board. Gives us an opportunity to vet the information, make sure we're not going too fast, to get ahead of ourselves. It's appropriate, is it aligned with, uh, student issues? And then the student representative will take direction from the superintendent and the board chair to seek further student voice for consideration on, uh, student-related topics. So, you know, things that we, that you all are requesting more information on, then direction would be given to that student rep, to be like, you know, go and, um, you know, talk to others, maybe it's something about student athletes, maybe it's something about academics. Maybe it's, maybe you go to a student council meeting, and you get their input, and then that gets fed, you know, fed back to the board. So just a way to kinda broaden student voice through the student rep position. Okay, do you all have any questions about those? Okay, so what I, uh, just a recap, senior only. So removing of the second term, even though we're leaving it as two years. And then, uh, at the board discretion, discretion on if there's a vacancy that needs to be refilled, and then adding board chair to that orientation process. Okay, and then removal, um, that was, again, already embedded into the policy. I just sectioned it out, so it was a little bit easier to see. Uh, Mr. Harris had put in there that it should be a five-five vote. I think that was a typo. Um, actually, it may not have been, 'cause I think he did spell out full, like a supermajority. But the other policies, everything's consistent with the way that you all do voting, and that's a three-fifths, uh, vote. And so everything else in there, that's obviously white all the way through the bottom, is, you know, consistent with the original, uh, very original policy, before we even added a, a student rep.
So you're saying leave the five-five?
No, 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 I, three-five is what the other.
Supermajority should be four, four-five.
I'm sorry, he had, he had, yeah, he had it five-five. And I'm taking it back to what we originally intended, and that was consistent with other policies, as three-fifths majority. Under removal, do you see that?
I do, but, um, I think it should be a supermajority, which would be four-five.
On a removal.
For a removal.
'Cause most things like that, that is supermajority, if for removal and stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm consistent with the language that I found in other policies, so if that's something you all wanna have discussion about, I'll change it.
In other, our policy, or just other, are you talking about the other policy?
The Woodford Gallatin, yeah, the other policies were a three, three-fifths majority vote.
Just based on, I mean, a lot of our policies here, for stuff like removals and things like that, it's, it is supermajority, is what I think Mr. Talby's basing it off of.
Yeah, but we're, you're talking about more high-level executive decisions, and not.
No, it's just a supermajority, four, four-five majority.
For what types of removals?
For removal.
Of what?
Of a, of, if there's gonna be a removal.
Of the superintendent, or of.
It needs to be a four-five vote. That's my opinion.
Yeah, no, not disagreeing. I'm just asking, where's the supermajority removal for, for your, for other things that you've used?
Well, I don't know about the, for removal, but, um, if you wanna add something during, after the agenda's already approved, then it takes a supermajority to do a four-five, to add it after the agenda's already been approved. So there is a, there is a, there is a four-five, I guess, you know, four-five does exist.
Yeah.
In areas.
Yeah.
So I think it should exist in this area, and going by two districts may not be the best thing in the world, it's not a large sample.
It's, it's at least three, but again, I kinda shared, well, I kinda shared with you the things of the other, and you're all welcome to call other districts yourself, but.
'Cause we don't have to follow them.
You don't have to, no, but I don't think that would be good advice either.
What, four foot, four feet's not good advice?
No, not following what other districts are doing. I was like, um, I don't think we should go rogue here and create our own thing. Uh, you know, when we have good guidance from other districts in KSBA, uh, to be able to use, to use that.
KSBA don't even recommend a student representative, so.
I mean, they'll give you guidance, but they're, after they're seeing more and more issues come up, um, you know, they're, they're, they're not necessarily recommending it, no.
I'm fine with three-five. Yeah, I'm good with it, too.
You almost said something.
It's up to you.
You got three, three, three-five, so I don't need to say anything.
Okay, so we're leaving three-five.
I've never been part of a supermajority vote.
You never added anything to the agenda for a four-five vote?
When you were assistant superintendent, there was supermajority.
Yeah, there was assistant.
Judy Hicks did supermajority. Yes, she did.
Okay, so I have gone through the full policy. If you all have any questions, we can kinda go back and revisit those. Um, I think we've gone through and checked, um, Ms. McCoy and I'm sure Mr. Harris have taken good notes, and then I'll get all of that revised, and then ready for a second reading for the January board meeting. But I think we still need to do approval of a first reading, based on these additions.
Okay, so, consider approval of first reading of amendments to Student Representative Board Policy zero-one-point-one. Okay, so consider approval of first reading of amendments to student representative board policy zero-one point one.
Give me to read the amendments again, just to make sure we're clear on everything. Okay, uh, we will leave student being a resident of Clark County. Uh, we will add, student cannot be a child or a stepchild or a legal, uh, or of a legal garden, guardian in Clark County. We want this to be a senior only, so we will remove second term options. However, we will leave the student being a student of George Rogers Clark for two years. Uh, we will add, um, at the board discretion, if there has to be a vacancy for an, uh, a student leaving. We will add include, including the board chair for the orientation of the student board representative and we will leave a three-fifths majority.
Is there an option for discussion before you all make the vote?
I think we just had that.
No, I can, he, if somebody wants to make a motion and second, it opens it back up for discussion. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Constanen.
I'll take it.
Second by Ms. Richardson, now you're back open for discussion.
Again, it's up to the board, but I am supposed to give advice, I do not advise, um, approving this policy with the three-fifths majority, just because we have had so many things in board history come down to a three to two vote. And like Mr. Talby said, something as little as amending the agenda is super majority, um, but that's just my advice, so up to the board.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries three to two. Item number twelve, consider approval of amendments to the Robert's Rules of Order policy referencing policy zero-one point four. Mr. Harris, Dr. McComas and Ms. McCoy.
Mind to jump on this, um, I looked at several other counties' policies, mostly Fayette, Montgomery, Madison, kinda the counties surrounding us and counties of equal size, almost every county mirrors our language. Um, at this point in time, I don't recommend revisions to the Robert's Rules of Order, cause I don't think we've considered every possible implication. Dr. McComas and I've tried to talk to some of those potential implications and I'm happy to have that discussion with individual board members. But I, I'm not ready to recommend that. Um, some policies I did find, and I can't remember what county it was, I think it was one in Northern Kentucky referred to parliamentary procedure. And I think that would just be confusing at this point. Um, Jefferson did, Jefferson policy, I pulled it up, does say, um, Robert's Rules of Order newly revised shall be the official authority of the board on all ports of parliamentary procedure. And then it says, except when changed by the statute or regulation of the board. I think that's the lang- language you were sort of looking to add last time, so I would just leave that up to the discretion of the board to vote on that language, but I don't think we've had the chance to talk about every possible ramification of that.
I don't think we was looking for, or to me, I wasn't looking for any possible, or looking for all the different scenarios. I was just trying to close the gray area where it basically said Clark County Board of Education will follow Robert's Rule of Order except in areas where policies have already been established. I don't know what's wrong with that, what's, what's wrong with that?
Nothing per se, I just don't know if we know all the implications of that change at this point.
If we have a policy that, that addresses an area, why do we have to go to the Robert's Rule of Order and have a gray area where a board member sees it one way and superintendent's already sees it another way? And it causes conflict when it should, we shouldn't have any conflict, it should be black and white as much as possible, I know there's gonna be gray areas. But we shouldn't be following a book on Robert's Rule of Order if we have a, a policy established by ourselves or by KSBA. That's the way I look at it.
May I add something, cause I, I, I agree with you. I don't think it was Robert's Rules of Order though, that was giving us the problem. Um, when Ms. McCoy came in, we actually looked at that one policy. You focused on paragraph one, I focused on paragraph three, I think within that policy, there's some contradiction between paragraph one and paragraph three. So like, when you would, when you would, um, and I can't, I'd have to go back and look at it.
Follow it, a student representative would have, uh, voting rights. We went through that in a meeting bef, a couple of weeks before last, if we follow Robert's Rule of Order.
Which, which is why we just changed all of this policy to.
But it don't matter, we still got Robert's Rule of Order, we're gonna follow Robert's Rule of Order, someone could argue that.
I think of Robert's Rules of Order as governing procedural matters, it's just like order of voting, which is set out in policy. Were things that there are gray areas, like what you do when you don't have a chair or a vice chair, how do you conduct the meeting? I think of it as a procedural tool to help fill in some of the gaps between policy. Um, I understand there may be some conflicts.
Doesn't, doesn't matter.
Yeah, I mean.
Doesn't matter.
That language is out there and available if the board wants to adopt that. I don't know.
Parliamentary?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was Jefferson County, wasn't it, that had that one?
And I can share that policy if you'd like to look at it, but it's Jefferson policy one point four.
The way, in my time, the way it's always been is we followed our policy and then if there was no policy, you went to Robert's Rules of Order and it automatically fell on it. And that's how we went. That's, is that how you remember how we, I mean.
What I'm saying is we were following policy, but Mr. Talby's interpretation of policy was referring to par, like a different section of the same policy. And, and I'm referring to it, you know, a different section of the same policy, there may be some conflict within a policy.
But we had, you all had a meeting. Quoted Robert's Rule of Order for that meeting and we had policy to follow to, that, that should have been followed, that wasn't followed for that, for a meeting on noon one day, okay? And you, and it was questioned and you quoted Robert's Rule of Order. So I was trying to get away from that, is all I'm trying to do, is get away from that.
But on this twelve, aren't we just trying to decide if we're gonna go with consider approval amendments to the Robert's Rules of Order policy referencing? So I took that as we were going to decide what we were going to do, like are we going to follow our policy until?
The way this reads, I thought we were looking to adopt or re- review policy zero-one point four. And so what Ms. McCoy and I went through were all of the other policies similar, or not similar, but the zero-one point four from several other districts. They all still reference the same language that ours does with Robert's Rules of Order, with the exception of Jefferson and I think one other one. So we are not making any recommendation to change policy.
So we should have a policy that states Clark County Board of Education follows Robert's Rules of Order, period, that's the policy.
Except that the chair can vote, cause I think if you take.
Yeah.
Direct to Robert's Rules of Order, the chair can only preside over the minimum, can't vote, so that's why there's an exception carved out already.
If I'm not mistaken, there's a policy that says Clark County Board of Education follows Robert's Rule of Order and that's period, there's nothing.
It says with the exception, just like with what Ms. McCoy was saying, that in Robert's Rules of Order, the board chair cannot vote.
Knocking me off.
But. It's zero-one point four. Meetings, rules of order, the board shall observe Robert's Rules of Order, except the chairperson may make or second a motion and may vote on all matters before the board or where otherwise provided by law. So this is, this is the policy and it was the same as Fayette, Montgomery and Madison that we looked at.
But Jefferson had.
But Jefferson is.
A little bit more.
Yes.
Jefferson says, and I, I can.
It actually wasn't a little bit more, it kinda was more generic, it just used the reference to parliamentary rule.
This thing's driving me crazy. See, it kicks me back and it kicks me forward and then kicks me all the way.
Did you open a different tab so that you can?
This takes me nowhere.
No, like open up.
Oh, yeah, I did that a while ago. I'll get there.
I'm good, we can move on.
Okay, well.
Make a motion to either table.
Yeah, I was gonna say we, are we going, they're still consider approval of amendments to the Robert's Rules of Order policy referencing policy zero-one point four. See, I mean, where is it?
Well, we did not upload anything, cause the policy is not changing.
But I had it up here and now it's went away, I'd already pulled it back up and it's gone.
No, we didn't upload anything for that.
Okay, so does anybody want to make a, a motion or amendment? I'm flying solo here, cause my thing went down, so. Are we just going to table, what, what was your advice, Ms. McCoy?
On that, well, Ms. Nancy and I, I think we just found another, um, instance where they do contradict it, Tom, because, um, Ms. Richie, when you stepped out, she would ask me if we count your abstention as a yea or a nay, Robert's Rules of Order says a nay. Our own policy says abstentions, extensions are considered to be acquiescing. I can never say that, with the majority, so that's an, an instance where we would follow policy over Robert's Rules of Order.
Yeah, we've always counted it as a.
But it says specifically in the policy that that's how it's listed.
Yeah.
So, so what is your recommendation with this number twelve?
I don't recommend it, I don't think any changes are needed at this time, from what I, from what I can observe. But if the board wants to make, if the board wants to change that language, um, I can read in what, again, what Jefferson County said that the board policy, except as otherwise provided by board policy or statute. At this point, I don't see that there's an ongoing conflict between the two, unless there's something I'm not aware of. And I don't think we've considered all ramifications of that, but I think in general, the board follows policy over Robert's rules, just as with the abstaining member. I think that instance Mr. Talby is discussing, cause Ms. McComas and I've looked at, or Dr. McComas and I've looked at that several times, is really an issue with the policy conflicting itself and that's one I think we'll wanna look at in the new year.
Policies are a mess, we've got, we need to go through them, we've known that for years, that, and then we start and you open the book up and you go.
And that may be something that we need to create a committee on and it's not done on a month by month basis.
Who wants to be on that committee, cause you sit there and you look at it, you go, okay, I'm tired.
But it, you know, to, to Mr. Talby's point into that, uh, it might be something that we do need to form a committee over to. Well, you start with the chapter on powers and duties of the board. You know, that, that's the most appropriate place to start and that, that in itself could be manageable. Uh, but it's not gonna be done by next month.
And KSBA has resource, KSBA has resources as well that are helpful.
So you're saying just leave this be and just, so we just need to leave twelve B, I mean, twelve long, not twelve B.
That's what happened with it, so might as well table it or trash it or whatever.
What do you do with it? Yeah, that's.
You don't know.
Something that could always be tabled and reopened when we do look at policy a little closer.
Table it, you gotta, but I think, don't you have to?
You have to bring it back?
You have to have a specific date associated with it.
Okay.
So it's not you bringing it back.
But if you don't know, it can never come back up again.
Well, it can, but, but it won't.
But it, if it did, it would have to come back up with two, the whole, starts the whole process over again, which is what you would want anyway. You'd wanna be able to have time to have first reading on all of them and then.
Well, I guess, the proposed amendment would be to put a phrase in there after Robert's Rules of Order, let me pull that back up. Except when changed by statute or regulation of the board, that could be your proposed change and then the board could take a vote on that.
That's all I was asking for.
Oh, look, you made him happy.
I mean, ultimately, that's up to the board.
Okay.
I, I don't think we've considered every ramification, just like this one just popped up while we're sitting here about an abstention.
Well, I seen you grab your book out when I was like, oh, here she goes.
Cause you said four and O and I said, shouldn't that be five and O, because they've always counted the extensions towards the majority.
Yeah.
And then that's when she.
Yeah, I've seen her, I've seen y'all heads being over there. Okay, so you wanna make that motion that she just said?
Well, can you read that last part again?
Um, it basically says, Robert's Rules of Order shall be the official authority, I don't know, let me pull up our language.
Here, I have our language if you wanna compare it to the one that you, that you have.
Cause I mean, we gotta go somewhere with it.
Yeah.
Here, let me. Okay, our says, says the board shall observe Robert's Rules of Order, except the chairperson may make or second a motion and may vote on all matters before the board. And then it says, or otherwise provided by law. And you could add on to that as, or by regulation of the board, which I don't like the word regulation in Jefferson County, I think they should say policy of the board. So just, I think your change would be as otherwise provided by law or by policy of the board.
By law or policy of the board?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion to make that change. You got, you have that, um?
Okay, so this would be a first reading?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just, I guess, come back with the next one.
I think so, cause we discussed last meeting, tabling it to this meeting.
Okay, so motion by Mr. Talby.
My second.
Second by Ms. Constanen. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Okay, item number thirteen, set date for January twenty-twenty-two special meeting, the organizational meeting. And it can be, I know the first date, when that was January third. Man, I don't care, that's fine, if that's what suited everybody, but it was just so close to the first that I figured we need to put it out there to make sure you all, Brenda's retired, you know, Sherry's kids are grown, Megan's got babies. So, whatever you all wanted to do.
What is the third?
It's a Monday, it's the, uh, we were initially out of school and now we're back in school, so Monday, the third.
But whatever y'all wanna do, so it really doesn't matter, that's the only reason we took the third off. So that way it could be discussed and that if you all had another day, you all, that would be better, we could do that. So.
I don't care.
There was nothing necessarily wrong with it.
Oh, okay.
It was just up for discussion. Cause the regular meeting would have, well, you, you'll set your regular meeting, there is no regular meeting for January.
Yeah, I think because you set this calendar. On the first meeting and it's not really a special meeting and because you're gonna bump into the holiday with notice for a special meeting.
Well, the January third will be a special meeting, cause it's not on in the organizational calendar. So that very first meeting will be a special called meeting.
Yeah, so the thought was to give you all enough time to.
Yeah.
Proper notice because of holiday.
Because of the holiday.
And that's what I told her, it just, I just wanted to give them the ability, I, I just don't like going in and setting a date and saying you all are gonna be here for this date and time.
Do Tuesday then, on the fourth, which would give us.
We can do whatever.
You know, I mean. That gives you a little bit more time to get it.
I just figured, everybody was gonna be exhausted, cause you know, that week after, you're already just tired, so it's whatever, I don't, whatever. The majority wants. Cause I slow down after the first of the year. Everybody gets their hair done before Christmas, after Christmas, they're over it.
So are we proposing January fourth?
I think that gives you that Monday and to recoup. I make a motion to set the date for the, uh, special call meeting, organizational meeting for January fourth, twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, set a time.
At six-thirty.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Constanen, second by Mr. Talby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Anything needs to be taken off the consent agenda items to be considered separately, or are we good to go?
I'm good.
Sherry's reading over there, so can you give me the, okay, you're good? Bill, you good? Megan, you good?
Perfect.
Alright, so would anybody like to make a, a motion for items fourteen through twenty-six?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Richardson.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Hendricks, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Authorized payment of salaries and accounts payable.
I make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Constanen.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Hendricks, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero.
Sherry actually made the mo, the second.
Oh, sorry. Did you get that, Arlene?
Yeah.
I just wanted to see if you were on top of it over there. Um, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Was that you, Megan?
That was actually.
Alright, motion by Ms. Hendricks.
My second.
Second by Ms. Constanen, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Opposed, motion carries five to zero, you all have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
And you all have cards, welcome to send them out to whoever you like, we have, uh, already done.